Tracy, just tell us what we're doing here today.
Well, sure, Jean, I'm happy to. We're here at Vermont Marshfield Town Meeting to do some Marshfield Story Project interviews with people. And we're hoping we'll get folks that want to come in and just tell a short anecdote or memory about their experience with Town Meeting. And then we'll add that to our digital archive that we're creating with the Vermont Historical Society.
Good. And people can access that?
They sure can, yes. They can go right online. And in fact, if they want to see an example of that, I've got a table set up right outside here where they can see what we already have on Digital Vermont.
And what's the website?
It's called digitalvermont.org.
My name is Janet Ansor.
And tell me something about Town Meeting that comes up for you.
I'm the representative for Callis, Marshfield, and Plainfield. So I have the great good fortune of going to three Town Meetings every year. And it's really wonderful that all three towns have a very traditional Town Meeting. Local issues get discussed, great meal, particularly in Callis, which is where I end up. And it's just, I remember a Town Meeting growing up in Callis. And except it used to be warmer, I think, than it is now. But other than that, it hasn't changed a lot.
All right.
And I'm Tim Ash, and I'm the President of the Vermont Senate. Town Meeting Day for me, where I represent Chittingen County, where there are more than 12 Town Meetings. So what I find really remarkable about Town Meeting Day is that when people come together to talk about all their local issues, it breeds the kind of civility that has disappeared elsewhere in the country. And last night I was in Essex, hundreds of people talking about really difficult issues, but doing so in a respectful way. And I think when people have to be face-to-face like this, it makes it much harder to send vitriolic notes by social media or email. And I think that's one of the most important reasons to protect this tradition in Vermont.
I'll ask you.
My name is Pam Quinn.
Okay, so Pam, you want to tell me something about Town Meeting? Something you love about it, hate about it? The food? An event? A story? Or what you're doing here today? Because you're doing something different.
Well, I'm here because I live in this town. And I love to come to Town Meetings because I get to hear all the great little things that are happening. I also run the mentoring program. So it's a great opportunity for me to talk about the mentoring program, if anyone wants to talk about it. Yeah, I just think it's the side of spring, too. I always think, oh, Town Meeting is one of those days that it gets nice and then I want to go outside. The sun's coming in the window.
It's a great day.
It's a nice day. It's warm. Yeah, so we took the bus here this morning. And it was warm.
And are you doing something with children?
The kids are here. My kids are here doing the childcare. They're trying to offer free childcare, so my kids are doing it.
And is that new for Town Meeting?
They're trying, every year they try to do it. And then they were scrambling this year. And so I was like, my kids will do it if they get paid.
My name is Jeb Wallace Broder. I live in North Montpelier. And I'm a photographer at the Times Argus Newspaper.
And you're at the Marshfield Town Meeting?
I'm at the Marshfield Town Meeting once again. It's been doing this 28 years or so. So I don't always come to Marshfield, but a lot of those years I've been here.
And who chooses?
It's kind of up to me, actually. And it's sort of how I can fit in the most meetings in the most shortest amount of time, basically.
And so Marshfield is...
So I don't want to spend too much time driving. So I'm doing Marshfield, Plainfield, East Montpelier, Callis this morning. Sometimes I throw in Montpelier, but we divided it up a little differently.
And do you remember any outstanding events in the recording of these Town Meetings over the years?
There was a guy here, I'm not very good with names, so I don't recall his name. But he was an old guy who had just the most amazing weathered face. And he would always be at Town Meeting. I think he's passed away now. But I sort of recognized faces from year to year. And he was always one of my favorites to...
So he had real character?
Yeah.
And you liked photographing him?
Yeah. It's all about the people, really. I mean, photographs, I can't tell a story that, you know, such-and-such past or not, really. So it's more about who's here and what kind of interactions people are having. So that's what I focus on, are the people.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Sarah Galbry.
And you're here at...
Marshfield.
Town Meeting?
Yes, I'm here at Marshfield Town Meeting. I've lived in Marshfield for 10 years. Haven't been to every Town Meeting, but...
And are you here for anything special to name?
Well, I'm a member of the Town Force Committee, so I'm helping out with that display. And I'm also a writer with the Times Argus and Rutland Herald. So I'm doing a story, as a matter of fact, on the collection of stories from our town. Turns out several towns around the state have done similar efforts.
As this Marshfield Story Project?
Exactly. Collected stories from residents. And I think it's a really neat way to kind of preserve your town's history.
And any other memories or things you love about Town Meeting?
Well, I just love that there is a Town Meeting. I grew up in Connecticut. I'm a Flatlander. Came to Montpelier going on 20 years ago. And have been in Marshfield for 10. And we don't govern this way in Connecticut. This is really different. It's nice to sit down with your neighbors. I don't always agree with my neighbors, but I can still sit down and have a civil conversation and a nice neighborly relationship. And that feels pretty unusual.
Especially the word "civil," right?
Yes. There's something about face-to-face that I think, you know, requires us to be our best with each other. And that's a nice way to do things.
Great. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Michael Troopin. And this is my first New England Town Meeting, let alone my first Vermont Town Meeting. And it's pretty neat. It's a nice, it's a nice spot for it with lots of room and easy to participate at whatever level one wants to. And it's also a good opportunity for connecting names to faces, since everybody's got a name tag on.
Okay. My name is Joyce Cosimano. And so you're here at Marshfield Town Meeting. You want to tell us what you like about it or don't like about it? Or a story or a memory or...
Well, I just like coming every year because how everyone gets together, no matter what your party affiliation, whether you're Democrat or Republican. And it just, you know, I like to see all the old timers. And sometimes, you know, they make funny jokes. And, you know, it's just so Vermont, so old-school Vermont. Like, it just reminds me of, like, olden times or something like that. Because, you know, I don't know if other states have Town Meeting Days, but I just love that it continues on, you know. And I enjoy coming.
And how long have you been coming?
Well, I moved to Marshfield in 2007. So on and off, whenever I can get here, if I'm not working. Or I take, you know, I take the day off sometimes for Town Meeting Day when I can. So I don't make it every single year, but I try.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. Do employers allow you to just...
Yeah, I think they're pretty flexible, most employers. You know, you give them a notice a little bit ahead of time. And yeah, great. And they say, no problem.
Great. Anything else?
No, I think that's good.
What would you say about the older, older Town Members?
Well, I just like seeing the older Town Members come. And, you know, they say, like, you know, funny things. And they just are so, like, you know, just reminds you of, like, you know, how, you know, the old timers are with each other and how they, you know...
Well, they carry the memories for us.
They do.
So they have those funny stories and, you know...
They do, exactly. They have the funny stories. And I don't know, I just enjoy, like, they make me laugh. I just enjoy, you know, watching them. I get a kick out of how they are.
Yeah, and that participation, you know?
Yeah.
It's important to them.
It is, it is.
I'm Joseph Gangsa. I live on the John Fowler Road in Marshfield. Moved there in 1982. So I don't remember too well the first Town Meeting. I had attended Town Meeting before moving to Marshfield. But what I love about Town Meeting, obviously, and I think most people feel this way, is you get to see your neighbors, people whom you may not see throughout the year. You get to hear what people are thinking about. I just came out of a discussion right now where people are talking about the speed limit in town and what they're going to do about it. And somebody just mentioned, well, maybe if we let people know that they're driving through a community rather than on a highway. If they could understand that they're coming through a community. When they come off Route 2 and into our back roads, they're coming into a community. And she received a round of applause. Because that's how people feel about what's happening here. Is that this is a community coming together to talk about our common problems and talk about common solutions for those problems. So I really love Town Meeting for that purpose. It really is a laboratory for democracy in the larger community. And of course, today is Super Tuesday. And we're talking about our national community and who our national leaders are going to be. But I think it all begins at Town Meeting. And our face-to-face encounters with one another and what democracy means on that level. We have a greater appreciation what it means on a national level because we experience it here. So I really enjoy that aspect of it, is that coming together in a democratic forum to discuss the things that we discuss. You know, I remember some stories of people who unfortunately are no longer with us, who would sometimes call those of us who were not born here or didn't have our great-great-grandparents born here. We would be called Flatlanders, you know, and asked, how would you like to see the town? They say, well, before you folks arrived here, this is how I'd like to see the town. So there was always that. But by and large, as we all know, most everybody in the town recognizes each other as neighbors and people who are willing to help one another and were accepted. Even though I was not actually born in Marshfield. I've been accepted as a Marshfield resident for numbers of years. I think that my, some of my fondest memories were when we did bring in issues of national import, nuclear weapons abolition, as an example. Some people questioned whether or not that was an appropriate topic for Town Meeting. Those of us who felt it was appropriate reminded them that before the Civil War, there were discussions about slavery at Town Meeting. Because Vermont has been a state, which prides itself, rightfully so, on having abolished town slavery in its 1791 when it joined the Union. It was the 14th state. So Town Meeting was used to talk about nationally important issues. And so people accepted that. And the discussions around things like nuclear weapons or impending wars. To hear people actually speaking about things that affect the lives of everybody in such thoughtful and meaningful ways, I've always been impressed. Whether or not I agreed with the speaker, I've always been impressed by the thoughtfulness and care with which they describe these issues. And of course, then there's whether or not we're going to buy a new fire truck, whether or not we should support our wonderful library at the budget that they're requesting. So it runs the full gamut of the human experience, from whether or not we're going to have speed zones in our town, as we're discussing today, or whether or not we're going to support one another in times of climate crisis or things of that sort. Those kinds of things happen here at Town Meeting. So it turns out for me, and I think for a lot of people, Town Meeting is not just a forum as to how the town is going to work, but how do we work together as democratic people? And I think that's, to me, is one of the great glories of Town Meeting. Okay?
Okay, my name is Nikki Auerbach. And this is Edie and Abe. We just moved to Marshfield last year.
So is this your first Town Meeting?
Yes, it is. Oh, there are puppets in here.
We're in the art room, so there's lots of good stuff in here.
That's right.
And what, have you been in the Town Meeting process before, ever?
No, no. We moved from Poughkeepsie, New York. And I don't think we had Town Meetings. So this is my first time, you know. And we really wanted to be involved. And we did walk down this morning to the wrong place. You know, we went to the schoolhouse. And then we walked back and we took a little car. So we really wanted to be here.
Is there an issue you wanted to be here especially for?
Yes, we wanted to make sure we heard and talked about the speeding issue in the village of Marshfield, because we just moved here. And it was just maybe the second day in our new house, right on Cabot Road. And our dog ran out and got hit by a speeding car. And speeding cars and trucks happen all the time. And we live specifically, I mean, we live right on a 25 mile an hour speeding zone. And I wouldn't expect a 55 mile an hour vehicle all the time. And, you know, you get an occasional speeder, but not like what we see. All the time speeders. Sure, go ahead. And it's worris, I mean, this tragedy happened right after we moved in. We lost our dog. And...
Who got hit by one of these speeding...
One of these speeding cars. And they didn't even stop or anything. My husband was home when it happened. I mean, it's our fault as owners, you know, to make sure our dog stays out of the road. But it was just one of those things that just happened. We'd just moved in and it was, you know. And I'm just so worried. I, we learned a lesson there about the road. And, but we continue to see speeding cars all the time coming down the road, right to the stop sign. Or coming from the stop sign, they were picking up speed, going up to Cabot. And it worries me with the little kids.
So, and the article is on putting a...
Right, putting in a, I don't know what you call it.
One of those signs that has the flashing, the digital flash.
Yeah, digital sign. And there's a really long conversation happening right now. Everyone's being very thorough. What is the money being used for? Is it being used for, I mean, you know, what should it be used for? Should it be used for that sign or... Yeah, that's my husband. Joshua, come on in.
Did they have a vote?
Yeah.
Oh, good, why don't you sit down?
It was amended.
Well, sit down and tell us about it. So, your wife just told us about sort of the issue that is of special personal interest to you. And so they just got finished voting on having the signs put up in the road?
Well, so that was amended to have basically a task force for six months to intervene, to review and then make a recommendation within that time on how to spend, what are best options on. Because there was back and forth of whether having police presence versus the validity of signs. And, you know, studies can go both ways in the uniform. But yeah, I mean, in particular, just even if we didn't live there, it's, you know, it would be a serious, for our neighbors' decision.
Yeah.
So what do you think about this town process to do something like this?
We love it. I mean, one of the reasons we moved to Vermont was that more real democratic type of government.
Everybody here really cares. And they have really good points. And they're all being made, and everyone's being heard, and it's important.
Yeah. And we, I mean, again, we're relatively new community. And we were fifty for four years and didn't have as much information of what was going on as it was possible to really understand what the value was of our opinion or vote or whatever. So here, immediately, like, you know, we're...
Good. Thank you so much.
My name is Larilla Vanberry. And we have lived on Route 2 for 18 years.
Right next door to Town Meeting.
Uh-huh. And my husband has been a math teacher at this school for quite a while, too. And as a sub. But Town Meeting for me, which we started coming to when we first moved up here from Philadelphia, 18 years ago. And that was our way to get to know the community, including people like you two. And it's been wonderful because everybody disappears, except our neighbors across the street. But they're simply over there. It's community like no other in any other place we've ever lived. And it's also a way to check on our community, to see if we're still in a flow with them. Because in the winter, you don't see anybody for a long time. And sometimes you lose track of people. And as part of the aging community now, it's a little different. Because when we show up, we are also checking to see that everybody came out from hibernation in our age range. So it's really been wonderful. And to see when our neighbors across the street come home. You know, if they get away for even a little tiny bit and the lights go on there, it's like, oh, good, they're back safe. So that's what it's all about.
So it's connection for you. And it sounds also like it's connection and it's like being in sync with community and also over issues.
The issues are new for us. Because coming out of a suburb of Philadelphia, issues were about, you know, inconsequential things. Up here, they're real because they're impacting our neighbors. They're impacting our kids. They're impacting the way the community survives and carries on. And you have a chance to check in and to see if, gee, what are the issues now? How have they changed? What's going on? Oh, my gosh, the budget this year. Oh, wow. So, oh, is that why it's so big? Okay. You get your answers all in one place. And I've also learned, one of the biggest things for me is how to be patient. Because when you discuss things and you have to wait for the microphone to get passed around in the audience and run from one end to the other, that's all part of it. And that's why Town Meeting is so important. Because you get to turn around, cringe your neck and say, oh, is that who she is? Or is that who he is? And, oh, now I understand better. You don't get a chance to do that when you go stick your head in a booth and vote. But you do have to stand in line here to vote. So, and you're looking around at all your neighbors when you do it.
Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Noyes. And I live on Hollister Hill. And it's a Plainfield mailing address, but I live in Marshfield.
So you're at Marshfield Town Meeting?
I am at Marshfield Town Meeting. And I just wanted to put a plug in for Town Meeting. I grew up in Maryland, in Potomac, Maryland. And in Maryland, the system is one that's connected to counties. And that's where the seat of power lies. So as a child and a teenager growing up in Maryland, you had no sense of town empowerment or even individual empowerment. There was only a sense that there were these laws coming down from above. And that's why, when I moved up to Vermont as a teenager and went to the South Woodstock Country School, which is no longer existent, but I went to my first Town Meeting. And it really impressed me.
What, especially?
I mean, I wasn't really impressed by the level of importance, you know, of the level of seeming importance of the topics that were discussed. There were things similar to what we're discussing today, town ordinances to do with noise and sidewalks and speed. There are certain things that just keep circulating around. But I was impressed by the fact that people were getting together to make decisions. And it was my first, besides, in Potomac, we had different churches. And different churches would decide things and try to work things out locally. But it was still these factions, whereas we're all here and as a town to make decisions.
The factions all share, together?
Yes, we're not, I mean, there may be separate, you know, whatever, Republican, Democrat. But we're a town, more than that, on this one day. And to me, it would be the saddest thing in the world to see that go. I remember, I used to be a resident of Plainfield when I first came here. And I remember friends sitting behind World War II vets and having a totally different opinion of what they were talking about. But listening to them and thinking, wow, they're making sense. And it's when I first started realizing that I don't have to stay this way or that way, you know, like Democrat, Republican. If somebody's making sense in a Town Meeting, you kind of like pay attention.
Well, it's not like reading different points of view. It's like seeing the different lens, lenses on a topic in person.
Yes, exactly. And so that's when I sort of began to think, well, you know, there's a place where these party lines can melt. And that, you know, in a sensible way. I mean, just because it makes common sense. And so I witnessed that and I took part in that. And I made some great friends there. And I'm sorry that they're no longer with us. But the spirit of what they, I mean, they were serious about guarding something sacred. I would say almost sacred. And to see people discussing eliminating this gives me the heebie-jeebies.
And by sacred, you're referring to democracy or Town Meeting?
Democracy in action at a grassroots level. Not just some theory, not an intellectual exercise, but an actual exercise. So I'm, anyway, that's my plug. I really, really pray that this, that people, you know, recognize, yeah, it may be inconvenient, but it's one day. And it can make, to me, I just wish it would spread the other way. You know, I wish more states would have them. I don't know, are there any other states that still do it?
Somebody today said that they had Town Meetings where they were, and it wasn't Vermont.
I don't know what they are. It's a rare bunch.
Yes.
And so we've sacrificed something for convenience. And I just think, oh, gosh, we can go too far in that direction. And, you know, I remember, I think in the old days, we wouldn't have people be able to come in and you had to stay to vote on the big issues. That, you know, I'm glad that that was changed because some people are working and just have to get away for an hour or half an hour to vote. But so, but to eliminate it all together, I think, would be a crime-shame. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Alexandra.
Oh, hi, I'm Susan Green. And I'm the librarian in Marshfield. And I've been the librarian, I just figured out, it's almost 11 years.
And you've lived here?
And I've lived here since 1971. And I came here as part of the, I guess you could say, the urban Back to the Land group. So I came from an urban setting, New York City. And I was brought up in the Bronx. And I went to school in Manhattan. And I had a group of friends that were just fed up with the city at that time. New York City was very, very rough at that time. There were a lot of, you know, homeless people and drug-addicted people. And we saw friends in bad shape. You know, some of our friends ended up in bad shape.
So you left the city?
So we left. And we all came to Marshfield, believe it or not. I've been here that long. And we found a little farm on Route 2 that the only thing left is the barn. And someone turned the barn into a house, but it used to be a farm. And basically, my first Town Meetings, this is supposed to be about Town Meeting. I was probably 19 years old. And I was very alternative, you could say, compared to the people around me. And for my, Marshfield was very different then. It was, there was a...
You mean the Town Meeting or the Town?
Town, the village and the town. There weren't as many what people might refer to today as transplants. Most of the people were people from the community who had generations living here. And then Goddard was another thing, Plainfield and Goddard. That they did have a lot of people who might be called transplants.
Flatlanders at the time.
Flatlanders at the time. And so we were sort of unique in Marshfield, our little group. And so when I first showed up at Town Meeting, I was terrified. It was like, oh, these people, they're so different than me. And they're going to look at me funny and not listen to me. So I didn't say a peep the whole time. And I think it probably took me probably until I was 40 to feel confident enough to actually feel comfortable at Town Meeting. I would go every year, but I never felt very comfortable. And then the Town Meeting I remember the most is when I got elected to be on the school board. And I had no idea. I walked in the meeting and people, a few people said, will you run the school board, please? And they were trying to get someone off the school board. And I won't mention names. I really liked this person, by the way. But I thought, well, if this is what people want, they want a different viewpoint. I was working in an alternative school that had been started by Goddard faculty in the '60s, early '60s. And I was working there as a teacher slash administrator. I said, if this is what people want, if they want an alternative voice or a progressive educator on the board, then I'm going to run. And I got up and I paid my respect to the person who was currently on the school board and said, this is not against you. I just have things I'd like to offer the town. And, you know, I would be honored to serve. And I forget what else I said. And I got elected. And that was my first time that I spoke in Town Meeting.
21 years of Town Meetings, and then she spoke.
But I just didn't feel part of the community enough with that, before that, to feel brave enough to say a word. Isn't that odd?
Well, and do you think some of it was your age, too?
Could have been my age, but also feeling like an outsider.
Well, how many nineteen or twenty-year-olds came to town meeting then?
True, true, true. Plus, it really wa- it's a very different town meeting now. It really was made up more of local people. And then there were a smattering of Goddard faculty who spilled into Marshfield to live, and a smattering of Goddard students who stayed behind to live here, but it was mostly local Vermonters.
So it was made up of different people, mostly local Vermonters?
I would say so.
And did that make the meeting different than it is today?
I think there was more, I would say, there was more conversation, more controversy. But I think Mary Leahy, just, we were just talking about it during lunch, said that more issues came up at town meeting that didn't belong to the state at that time. So more of the issues belonged to the villages and the towns than they do now. So the state kind of, this is what Mary said to me today.
Yeah.
I actually had never thought about it. And I'd like to go back and look at old town reports and see what she means. But she says, back then, more of the issues were handled locally. So there was more conversation, more controversy, more, some very heated discussions, even through the nineties. And that's changed. I mean, we're kind of rubber stamping through the meeting.
Oh, really?
That's what I've noticed. Back then, people would raise their hand about, like, the budget never would have gone through that way. It was every issue, why do we need a new fire truck? Why do we need this? Why do we need that? Someone always raised their hand. So it was very different.
That's a good distinction. That's, that's great.
In that way, now I'm noticing, we kind of argue and talk more about little things, you know, like five hundred dollars for the RIT committee. We just did that today. Things like that. So that's changed. But I don't know if it's a good or bad change, I'm not going to judge it. It's just a change.
Well, and some of it is out of the hands of the town, if the state took over some of the, you know.
Yeah, I think there's less people. I think we used to have more people at the meetings. It used to go on till three.
Is it over?
It's close to being over. There's only three more articles. But anyway, you have a line waiting.
Oh, okay.
My name is Alicia Crisimano.
And how did you like town meeting?
Well, I like to keep abreast of the latest, and I don't wanna feel I'm back in the dinosaur age, because I have to bring myself to the twenty-first century and keep abreast of what's going on, even though I'm not attributing too much, except I try to learn what's happening and vote.
And that feels important to you?
Well, of course, otherwise, I have to feel functional.
Mm-hmm, good. So makes you feel like part of the community and you're contributing?
Well, I don't know about contributing, but I am helping myself and keeping my brain functional, so that people around me don't get bored.
Good, good, that's a good reason.
Well, at ninety-two, I just can sit in the corner. That's not quality life.
That's right.
As long as I'm healthy, I'm gonna keep my brain going. So I can make it easy for my daughter Joyce.
That's really thoughtful. And so you have a lot of issues to keep your brain busy about today?
Well, I learnt a lot from whatever I can hear, and I learned that there are a lot of good people giving of themselves to make a better community, a better way of life for those that's fortunate and for those that are living in the same community, and it's a team work. And it's good people, and thank goodness for there's more good than bad. I like to think that.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you for interviewing me, and I hope you enjoyed it.
My name is Pat Mayhew.
Yeah, and you've been to how many town meetings now?
Well, probably, at least, probably fifty.
And how, any particular memories or stories you wanna tell? Or maybe how it's changed from when you first came to your first town meeting? Or your impression of your first town meeting?
Well, my husband Tony and I were part of the so-called Back to the Landers movement. We were hippies. We came from Burlington. My husband had been teaching at UVM for a number of years, and he got interested in Goddard, and so he got a job at Goddard. And we moved down here, and about the first thing we did was, we rented a house just off on the Cabot Road, and we knew a guy who knew some people that needed a place to live. They were a young couple with their baby, who were waiting for a year before they homesteaded in Alberta. They had to wait a year. And so, it was a big farmhouse, so we figured, well, why not have them come and share our space? Well, eventually, that got to be fourteen people, and we were the first commune in Marshfield. And so town meetings were rather contentious, because I think people like us were a threat to the people who had lived here for many, many years. And so you would go and speak and, or say something, or maybe just being there was threatening, because we were called commie pinkos, you know, responses to our, just saying anything. And I'm not saying everybody was like that. We had some neighbors on the Cabot Road who were really kind and wonderful neighbors. And I'm sorry, we kind of lost track of them, because we were, we decided after a year that we wanted to have our, to buy a house, and we didn't wanna buy that old farmhouse, 'cause it was low, it was by the river, it was moldy and...
On a busy road.
That Cabot Road, yeah, and it needed a lot of work. And we had always talked about an old house, but Tony finally said, you know, I don't know how you feel, but I don't wanna play maintenance man in my spare time. Do you? And I said, no, I don't. So we found a place on the Beaver Meadow Road that was relatively new, not very interesting, but it had possibilities. And so, over the years, yeah, I've seen town meeting get more core, I mean, there's more, there's been more give and take between the old timers here and the newcomers. And actually, it's funny to see some of the older people's children, who are now adults, with long hair, smoking weed, you know, all that kind of stuff, the next generation. But...
And did you feel comfortable when you were first participating in town meeting to speak up? Or what did town meeting do for you? Was it more educational? Or did you feel like it was important for you to participate at the time?
Oh, I, I think we both felt very much like, wow, you know, we've never lived anywhere where everybody in town gets together and, you know, I mean, in real time, face to face, breathing the same air and, you know...
Different factions.
Yeah, different factions, but that's okay. You know, we've never been afraid of controversy. So, we didn't always feel comfortable speaking our minds about things, but we tried to be as polite and considerate of others as we could, and, and we found that, over the years, it got better. And pretty soon, it was almost hard to tell, you know, the old timers from the newcomers, so...
A melting pot.
Yeah.
And they began to accept you?
I think so, yeah, I think so.
And you were feeling that?
I, I served on, oh, very soon after we moved here, I was on the recreation committee, and there were old timers, Murs Spooner and people like that on the recreation committee. And, you know, we began to interface with people, and so they got to see that we weren't, you know, horrible people.
Horrible, threatening.
That's right, and we got to see that, you know, they had their kind sides and their fears, too, and stuff, and...
Do you think they ultimately valued the different lens that you, the, you know, the new generation or the new, the outsiders brought, or...
We never talked about that, but I suspect, in some ways, it was refreshing to have some new blood, in a sense, because I think a lot of these towns, small towns particularly, everybody knows everybody else. Everybody knows all the gossip. They know what everybody does and thinks and how they live, and I think it gets a little boring sometimes, perhaps.
So it even gave them, even if I, even something to push against might have been interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
The controversy itself, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, could have been true. So, in a way, the changes in town meetings sort of are the microcosm for the larger, the macrocosm of the village, and I think it represents fifty years of, you know, it takes a while.
So we practice, so we have, we have practiced civil discourse.
And, and that's what I like about town meeting very much, that there are rules. Some people get, you know, a little upset about Robert's rules, and it takes time, you know, and you can't add this amendment, because it's not in the rules at this point in time and so on. But generally speaking, you feel like you've got a framework to work within, and everybody pretty much respects that, so, yeah, yeah.
Cool. Any particular memories of a standout year?
In terms of what we accomplished at town meeting?
Anything.
Well, Tony and I were just remembering one guy, Bernie Carpenter. I don't know if you've been here since he was old timer, a piece of work. And he always came out with these things that often were made people's eyes wide open. But I remember when we had on the list of additional things to fund, there was something about a women's domestic violence organization. And Bernie piped up, what do we need that for? You know, what do they need three hundred dollars for? And somebody said, well, Bernie, it's, you know, there, there are women who are abused, mostly women, and they need help, and this is an organization that does that. He said, they're abused, he said, they probably asked for it. And I turned around and I looked at him, I said, Bernie, you don't mean that. And he said, yes, I do. Tony and I just were remembering that this morning in town.
And do you remember, did it get voted in?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. In fact, there've been years when they voted for more than what was asked for.
Really?
More, yeah.
How does that happen? Just someone suggests?
Yeah, all you have to do is say, well, you know, I know about this organization, and it does a great job doing this and this and this, it's so valuable to the community and so on. I think we oughta add a couple hundred dollars to it or whatever, or double it. I've seen it double when, you know, it was like two hundred dollars or something. And people have been convinced. So, it's, it's, you know, a lot of old timers, particularly people we know, and not a, a lot of them aren't themselves old timers, but their children, grown children of old timers and so on, they won't come. We've tried to talk to them about it, and they say, it's, everything's decided already, you know.
Oh, really?
You know, we're not gonna make any difference if we come. And it's, it's all by a bunch of people, newcomers, who don't really know this community like we do and so on, and...
Oh, so it's not that the state has taken over some of the issues that are no longer at local hands, it's more like they feel like it's the loc- the, this other group of people who've come in who didn't grow up here?
Yeah.
Have taken it over, have taken over deciding for me?
Mostly newcomers, yeah. I mean, if you can call them, I mean, some of them have been here as long as, well, yeah.
So you're fifty years a newcomer?
Yeah, right. Well, to some people, that is a newcomer. You represent something different and new. And I think, you know, I, I would really like to see town meeting grow, I'd like to see it made, I mean, they can do away with Bennington, but it is a holiday, as far as I'm concerned. I don't celebrate it. It didn't even happen in Bennington, so it was over in New York State across the border. But, you know, make that a holiday, for one thing. Now, it's gonna take a while to get people to get used to the fact that they have a free day that they, but it's dedicated. It's not just, you know, to get the rubbish taken out and all that kind of stuff, but it's, it's created so that they can come to town meeting. And we used to have babysitting all the time. We haven't had that for a while, but then hardly anybody brings their kids.
Are you saying they're thinking of making today a holiday?
No, I, I think we should talk about that.
Talk about that, to free people up who can't leave a job.
Exactly, 'cause that's what a lot of people's excuse is.
Right.
You know, oh, well, I have to work, I can't afford to take the day off, you know, or my boss wouldn't let me do that, or whatever. And actually, last town meeting, Michael Cacavolo, the moderator, it, well, it was suggested to him that we get sort of a task force together to talk about it. So Mary Leahy and I were interested in just getting an informal group together to meet anybody who was interested and had ideas and so on. But it was a horrible, horrible night for weather, and Mary thought that, 'cause we don't have a computer, as you might know, might remember from when we were doing that thing on Hollister Hill. So she called me and said it'd been canceled. And then I called Michael sometime later and said, have you rescheduled or anything? He said, oh, no, we had the meeting, but only one person was there. And so I'd like to still see that happen, because there might be a number of things we can do to, especially encourage younger people to come to town meeting.
Well, I've heard a few people talk about it today.
Yeah.
Who've had to run in and run out just to vote. So is that something that got discussed at meeting?
It hasn't been yet, no, no. It's great that you're giving up your time for being at town meeting to do this. Have you had a lot of people?
Yeah, yeah, a whole bunch of people, and, and it's interesting, because everybody has a little bit different, brings up something a little bit different about process or, you know, their own personal things or a particular issue, or just, it's all been lovely, a lovely, so we're putting together a composite, and everybody's had something really lovely to contribute, including yourself. Well, that's great, 'cause you each...
My name is Ray Rapczynski.
And my name is Julie Rapczynski.
Hey, Ray, Julie, okay. And so, this was your first town meeting?
Correct.
What was your impression? Would, have you been in a place, have you been to a town meeting ever before?
No, not so, we're from northern New York, and they, they just have monthly meetings. They don't have, they don't make a big thing of it every, every year.
I've been to school board meetings, and I've been to different town meetings for different issues that, you know, a small town would have monthly meetings, and if there was a reason to go, I brought up issues before, you know, so I've...
Is this like a city council meeting where they're discussing issues?
This is more like, uh, we weren't quite a village, we were like a hamlet, smaller than a village, but it was like, but there was a, there was a town board, if you will, so making decisions for different aspects of the town. So not, I don't think it was quite as big.
So how was this different, then? What was your impression or experience?
Well orchestrated, you know, well, the speakers were sp- well spoken, and when it became redundant, people said, let's knock it off. It wasn't like you're supposed to.
So you enjoyed the people who just spoke up?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Good, so it felt real?
Yeah, it did, it did.
Very much so. I would say it's, compared to other things that I have done, it's, it seems more of an open process. What I think was positive about it, people did give everyone a chance to speak, which may be because the rules were set up that way. So there would be arguments, but people could speak. And then there was, but there was also a town where people could, if they had a difference in opinion, could speak up and, and say that, and it was very, I guess I'd been, and I've been in different situations where it was much more heated, and I think having the rule, not that I really like a lot of rules, but I like this rule where you can't argue with somebody, where you, you say your piece, 'cause then people are... Where you, you're, you say your piece, 'cause then people are almost forced to listen.
Right.
You don't know if to agree, but you do, you should listen.
So the microphone's like a talking stick. It's not an open discussion and the format you think, gives everybody a chance to say and listen respectfully, yes.
That, that happened only once or twice and the mediator put him right down and said, uh, you brought the motion to the floor. You've already spoken. It's not your turn. You can't.
So that was, that's important to foster that.
So what's your experience? Are you, uh, is it like impatient 'cause it takes so long or is it interesting or is it, you know, how did you personally experience it?
Well, we live across the street, so we walked over. And I got all day 'cause, 'cause I'm lame, so.
Convenient.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been here all day if I had a job. I probably wouldn't have been here at all if I had a job.
Well, see, my job, we get the day off to do it and I actually moved here last year, moved here before he did for my job, but I didn't know enough. I was all confused with what town I was living in, 'cause the post office was different than the town.
Oh, that has, me too. I'm a Plainfield.
I was all confused and now this time was a good chance to, I figured it all out ahead of time, like, okay, where do we actually, like, live and. Where do we vote and what's this all about? And then we got this in the mail. I was like, oh, I'll read this. I think it's valuable for people. A lot of people I know don't take advantage of. The opportunity to, to ta- to do it and some of it's because of work or some of it's because if you have a day off of work, you wanna go skiing or something. Which I totally get that. Um, but it's also, um. And that's important to figure out maybe is there a better way to get people more involved, um, you know?
Right.
And, and I think that, I think that there actually is because I think about some of the topics that were brought up about. And I think families would be invol- would be involved with. Is there a way that they could get their, to talk about some of these issues or, you know?
Last year there was a task force, um, appointed and the night they were having the meeting was some big blizzard and so one person showed up. So I think there may, there may be forward momentum on that, just to say that. Somebody earlier today said that.
Yeah, and the weather, you can't control that, so it's, you know, but I don't know.
So you see the value then of, of, of people participating in the decisions that affect their lives versus. It's like you had a hybrid system.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think that the problem is it's really easy to dismiss, ignore, not think about it if you're just checking off a box. So when you have to come, 'cause for me too, I didn't agree with everything I heard, but I respected the fact that. Someone spoke up and gave their opinion, even though I didn't agree with what their opinion was, that's okay, like, they have a right, you know? And you lose that if you're just checking off a box.
That's true. And did anybody give you cause for more thought on a subject? I wasn't in there today personally, but.
I think, yeah, a lot, because some of it was renewed. We don't know of all the, you know, there's, there's issues going on that I think are important, but I wouldn't know. Sometimes I know.
Did, and do you, did you feel welcome and?
So certainly.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Right from the time we passed you, or passed this booth this morning, we, what was her name?
Tracy.
Tracy. She was one of them. And there was an exhibit here and now she closed up and left, but you opened up shop here, I see.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So any other first impressions or thoughts or something you wanna tell about the political process or the?
Uh, there's, if, if there's a way to, I think that's. Part of it's aware, I think it would be important to keep it going, but is there a way to do that? That is, that are gonna encourage people to come, but that, that this is bit, I think it's, it's more of a bigger issue because. We're seeing that all through society where there's less, uh, where I lived before and, and less volunteers, less people doing things. There were some, some really cool events that were happening where I used to live and they, they stopped happening because people weren't volunteering. There wasn't enough to, to have them happen and even that didn't. It was like, okay, it's not happening anymore. It's like, come on, people, stop it. Um, so.
Right, so, so then it's heartening to see people involved?
Yeah, it is heartening and then if, if there's a way to think about that, um.
Keep it going.
A way, and a way to encourage, and I think especially, um, younger people. Because this is your future. A lot of this has to do, you know, with five, ten years down the road, so. Thinking about it now, that, so I don't, you know, I don't know the answer per se, but I think the childcare, I noticed that. You know, my kids are grown now, but having a childcare is an excellent idea. We went home for lunch, but we noticed that there was lunch, like, so that kind of a thing where there's food available, childcare available. That stuff is good.
Thank you so much.
My name is Michael Stark.
And so you're saying this is the first meeting you've stayed the whole thing for a, a long time?
For quite a while.
Is there a reason for that?
Uh, usually work and I'm too busy and I, uh, got other things to take care of.
Right.
That's typically why.
So you actually are available. It's not that you didn't, yeah, wasn't it? Particular issues or anything? So what do you think of the whole process of town meeting or?
Well, the first town meeting I ever went to was in Plainfield when I was five years old and my dad took me. And I never thought anything was more boring in my whole life. But I think it, it did instill an institution that I should go to town meeting as an adult, remembering. Of course, back then I didn't know what they were talking about, you know?
Is that when your family moved here?
No, my, I'm from here.
Okay.
My dad was a native Vermonter who went to, uh, Goddard College in nineteen forty-six, forty-seven. And, uh, my family was all around the Rutland, Clarendon, Shrewsbury to Bennington area. And, uh, I got born up here 'cause my dad was going to Goddard.
Okay. So have you been to town meetings in various places in Vermont?
No.
Just here?
Just here in Marshfield. I was a select person for six years, so had to stay for all those meetings and also.
So tell me the difference then between experiencing town meeting as a select person and as just a towns person?
Well, you know, um, it used to be that there was a lot more attendance. There was a lot more people coming to town meeting. And, uh, there was a good division of newcomers and people that were, had, were native Vermonters. There was a little bit of abrasiveness at that point and, uh, it reached a point, I think during the time I was a select person in. Late eighties, early nineties, uh, that it flip-flopped the other way. There was more people moving to Vermont. Coming to town meeting. And I used to often talk to some people who would so worried that their issues would be voted down. And I said, well, take a look around you. I don't think that's gonna happen.
So did, did that hap- I mean, so when you said there was friction, was it between these two factions, the newcomers and the old people? And you think there were more of them because they were farmers and could actually, in charge of their own schedules?
Yes, I do believe that, yes. You know, there is a lack of farms now comparatively speaking. Uh, farms used to be much smaller. A large farm was thirty-five cows. Most farms, especially when I was a young child, was nine to twelve cows and. People were pretty self-sufficient, had their own gardens and we produced a lot of food in Vermont then, whereas now we're not.
And so do you think that it actually happened that way, that when it was more the old timers and fewer newcomers, that the outcome of the decisions might have been different? Or, and when it, when it flipped off?
Vermonters in general are pretty open people with open minds. There's, you know, I would think that in most parts of the country, uh, someone who's considered conservative in Vermont is actually a liberal person. And I think it's always been that way.
So there's a lot of birds of a feather here whether we're newcomers or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you don't think then that people, if, if people are feeling like. It won't be about my issues or my issues will get voted down, do you think people still think that?
Could you repeat that?
If, you know, some people don't wanna come 'cause they feel like their, my issues are gonna just get voted down anyway?
I think there are people like that, yes. And I also think that, you know, the town meeting, I think it could be hold any day of the week. I don't think it's gonna change the attendance that much anymore.
So it's that perception that is there and, and, you know, which is interesting because you think they'd wanna show up and be here to vote.
Yeah, I guess Australian ballots changed a lot of that. I also think that communities were back in the day, everybody really knew each other. And today I don't think that's true.
And you think that makes for reluctance to speak up or, what does that change?
I, I think that people, uh, felt an obligation to go to town meeting back then, whereas today, I don't think so. I don't think people, because of, uh, local democracy, I think they felt an obligation to come.
And now?
Now I don't think that people think that. I think, so there's probably a demographic that feels like, you know, whatever, what you said. Whatever I say isn't gonna matter anyway. And that could be, has nothing to do really with the town so much. I think it's an overall. View of polit- political agendas.
And maybe, because this is probably more the old timers, is it? And then so their experience because they knew each other. And we're all gonna talk about the issues, maybe, you know, they're not fear that that just isn't happening.
Yes, um, you know, it's, it's hard for me to pinpoint that.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
To actually say that it would be that.
Yeah.
I do know that attendance used to be much higher. I enjoyed being a select person. It was a lot of fun and I was never one of these people that said, oh. You know, if there was a phone call, I would be a good listener. I, I never really got a lot of high-rate phone calls. Which is good.
That's good, yeah.
I mean, the main thing that select people supposed to do is keep our roads.
Uh-huh. Oh, that's what the select people do? The main thing?
Yeah, it's all about the roads is where the main focus was on maintaining roads. Running town crews, making budgetary decisions on equipment, that kind of thing. And it's sort of progressed into other places now.
And what is it, what does it include now? That's different.
Well, I haven't been a select person in a long time, since ninety-two.
Only twenty-eight yet.
But non-binding issues and all that coming before the town, I don't think was such a big deal.
Okay.
In the past.
Right, right, right.
I think it had to do with budgets, maintaining roads, and I think it's grown into other places at this point, which I don't think is bad. I, I think it's good.
And are there still the same number of select people?
Yes. Some towns have gone to more, but, um, there's always been three in Marshfield.
Yeah, so that means it's more work.
There always, even when I did it, if you did a good job, you could put twenty hours a weekend. And today, with all this regulations that we have, I'm sure if you did a good job, it might even be more.
Right, right, right.
At one point, I, I ran a, a small carpenter business in town here for over forty years. And, um, I had one person saying, I didn't call you because you volunteer for the town so much. I didn't think you'd have time.
Wow, that's great.
And that was when I was gonna be sending my kids to college, so.
Wow.
I kinda said, I think I got, I did stay on the schoolhouse comment board for ten years.
So you've really been involved.
In the past.
So just for historical record, you don't have to answer this if you don't want, but when there was like some great contention, what did it tend to be over? Were there topics that were hotter than others?
Town appraisals. It used to be there was a large contingent of people who didn't wanna give any money to charity. But they never could win out. There was still a, 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 a small group that was loud. We don't seem to see that anymore.
People are happy to?
Yes.
Yeah.
It seems to be the case, yeah. That people are more willing to, to vote in, um, money for that has to do with charity.
And those charities come to the select.
Board.
Board and get themselves on the.
Yes, they do.
Agenda.
Yep. So I don't.
Okay, my name is Edwina Valenza. And my, I go by Winnie and I'm the assistant town clerk in Marshfield. Which I love. I love the job. I love the town. Uh, we moved here from New Jersey twenty years ago. And the very first time I ever went to town meeting, I was in awe. I had never, ever been anywhere that made me feel like. The democratic process was really working until I came here. It was, I still get goosebumps when I think about it. Because it was so exciting to hear people stand up, speak their minds, you know, and some people go on and on and on and. I might be one of those people, you know? But it's just wonderful and I would hate to see it go away, the open town meeting. I, um, understand why people like the Australian ballots. I understand, you know, there's two sides to every coin. One is. Well, the precious few that come to town meeting, you know, we have a, a, a voting, uh, group of eleven hundred people. And less than two hundred sometimes show up at town meeting. Not, th- there's a lot more than that, that vote, but actually come to town meeting. But. Everybody I talk to, everybody I touch, I ex- I tell them about my experience and especially newcomers. To ask them to come and just see what the process is like.
Yeah, because when you were in New Jersey, what, how, how did, what did governance feel like to you there?
It felt like, I always voted. I always felt as though it was, if I didn't, if I didn't vote, I didn't have any reason to complain about things. So as soon as I got my, you know, I was old enough to vote, I went and voted. But you go in, you sign, you say your name. You go to a voting booth, the curtain closes around you, you click, 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 you know, you hit the lever, it goes into the machine. You walk out, you say your name again and you leave. You know, people are sometimes glad to see you, but half the time they don't know who you are. Because it's such a big amount of people that turn out because they don't have, and maybe they do have open meetings. In the townships, you know, in the smaller townships, and I was from a small township. But unless it was something that pertained to me, I never went because I didn't know that I had an opinion. I could have an opinion. About anything else.
So town meeting taught you, you could have an opinion?
I could have an opinion and I could state my mind and somebody would listen. And sometimes that's all people want. It's just for somebody to listen.
Well, it even sounds like being educated about what you were voting on. I don't know how much information you got at the booth in New Jersey.
Well, you didn't. You listened to the news and if you didn't read the newspaper and listen to the news, you really didn't know what was going on. And even with the school votes, you know, they didn't have the kind of open meetings at the school board and we lived close, so I mean, I knew. When they were having board meetings, but you would go and they would tell you what they were doing. And you really didn't have any say. And I, I just, I want people to know that it's a wonderful thing and I just don't want them. To go away. I don't want it to go away and I don't want people to not take advantage of the fact that they can go to town meeting and have this ability. Because it is.
So it sounds like a great model to expand on in our future as we deal with our, doing our democracy.
Process, yes. And I think it's something that the children, I mean, I know that kids go to school and they hear about town meeting. And they know their parents are going to town meeting or not, you know, for whatever reason. But I think that we really need to educate our children as far as the process is concerned and what an honor it is. And it truly is an honor because you feel like you've participated in something.
And there are no civics classes?
Right. They have gone away. So, you know, a- and that's sad too, but that's another whole story.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe baby these times are inviting us to get more involved and participate more and so you're a voice toward that. And you haven't been alone in that today?
Oh, good. I'm so glad to hear that, yeah. You know, and, and I mean, I think what prompted me so much is because we have a survey now that. Bobby was asked by our select board to put out on, uh, Front Porch Forum on our website. Asking if people would be, um, happier if we had, uh, the Australian ballot and if we went to a different day for town. And if we went to a different day for town meeting, and, you know, people can put input in. But I would just hate to see it go away.
Is that being deliberated?
Uh, not at this point, but I think that that would be, it's a very slippery slope. And I think once you go to Australian ballot, it's not too far from, nobody's gonna show up at town meeting anymore. Because the reason people come is because they have an opinion about who is running the town and they want to be heard. And I think if they can be heard without showing up, it's gonna make it easier for them not to show up, so.
My name is Tracy Hamilton. And my partner and I own Marshfield Inn and Motel just up the road. We moved here to Marshfield in two thousand and five. And I can still remember when we came to our first town meeting day. It was so exciting because we'd never experienced anything like this in Pennsylvania. We felt truly part of this new place where we had made our home. And we sat through the whole day and we voted for all the different committees and the funding. And I even stood up and gave my support for the library budget because I had uh, enjoyed going to the library so much. I do remember it was a frigid cold day um, in March, I think it was even below zero. And at the end of the day, we came out to our car to go home feeling really good, and here we had a flat tire. And we didn't know what to do. I mean, we lived right up the road, but it was way too cold to walk. So, one of our neighbors, Bill Goss, he's no longer with us, but that man was so nice. He took us home, dropped us off, and then came back with us the next day and helped us change the tires so we could take the car home. So that's my memory of first town meeting day.
That's amazing. And meeting, was that meeting your first, had you met a lot of people by then?
No, we met a fair amount of people, but we, it was just the time when we felt really part of the community, I think, for the first time.
Didn't realize how close you lived to town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no excuse for us not to come.
Unless you're working. Do, now you own the inn, do you have guests usually? That, on town meeting days, they might be from somewhere else?
Well, sometimes we did, but we're closed now. Yeah, I think this is the end.
Yeah, that's okay, I mean, that's okay, he's gonna edit it, but yeah, you know, just, I'm just going.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
But did you, did you have, what did you do?
In March, well, I guess what we did is we just said we weren't doing breakfast that morning. I don't really remember. I'm sure there were times when we had people there that we were committed to making breakfast for. And we could have just said to them, look, we have to get to town meeting by nine o'clock, you gotta get out of here. Eat and get out of here, yeah. 'Cause we, we didn't miss one. I mean, we always have come to town meeting, yeah.
That's great. I, it's ten o'clock, okay.
I wanted to tell the story about Bill Goss and the flat tire.
That is amazing.
And also standing up to talk about the library, 'cause that is something that is just so out of character for me, you know? But I just felt so strongly like, I love this library.
When did you do that?
At that first town meeting. I stood up and said, I think we should vote for the whole budget because this is a great library.
That should be, we, I hope it's not.
Well done.